Meeting is being recorded and may be rebroadcasted or broadcasted on Westford Cat. We normally start by open forum. Anybody from the board have anything for open forum?
No.
Saying done, go to staff. Jeff?
Sir.
Anybody from the audience? We have got nothing. All right, moving right along with our first general business item, PB 2405, administrative review for 174 Littleton Road. Is that Joe?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So we do have someone representing Cold Stone here.
Oh, yep.
Should I try you at the table?
Yes, come on up.
Yeah, table, we're there.
Hi, everyone. I'm Keith Hensman with KWH Design. We prepared the drawings for the proposed renovation for Cold Stone Creamery going into the old Supercuts space. And at the suggestion of the building commissioner, we've requested an administrative review for change of use. We've been contacted by the Health Department with some questions which we're working on now with our consulting plumbing engineer.
Okay. Great. I saw the plan. So go to the board. Does anybody have any questions?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I think it can be handled administratively.
Absolutely. I agree. Do you have anything else for us? Anybody in the audience? You have a motion?
I will, I will move that with, for PB 2405, we approve administrative review and approval for a change in use at the former Supercuts at 174 Littleton Road to a Cold Stone Creamery.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's something I'm writing out to, you know, within about a week.
That's great.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, second general business items. We have PB 1924, 21 and 23 Carlisle Road, now known as Balsam Circle. Attorney Robbins?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from Farrell and Robbins. Balsam Circle, the short story is we're done. Project is completed. You're holding funds for a few different things. One was for the final as-built, which has been submitted. One was for final landscaping, which has been completed. And one was for installation of the emergency access road, which is done. I'll go through two of the minor modifications and then I do have one wrinkle to what I just said. We do have two minor modifications to the plan. One was that we did not construct the bocce court and the community garden because the homeowners association didn't want it. You don't have to take my word for it. There's a letter in the file from the trustees saying they would not like it. We've grasped and seeded it and they can put a garden in easily if they choose not to. That's one of the minor plan changes. The other was the removal of the ornate fence coming down the property entrance towards the, as a residential property, to the right-hand side, for lack of my directional arrow, I'm sorry, to the north. It was something we had put in for aesthetics. It wasn't something the abutter requested because of the grading and everything out there. The roadway looks excellent. The fence wasn't needed, so it was not constructed towards the front of the entrance and going to the back of the property. So we've requested that that fence be removed. Those are the two minor changes. The wrinkle. So the wrinkle to the as-built plan is that there's a small area on one of the detention basins where there's not enough cover over the basin. It's only 250 square feet. It's over detention basins two and three. Why am I even bothering telling you this? It's because that's not the design spec for how these are designed. They're supposed to be a certain amount of cover and this certain area doesn't have enough cover. We've worked with the engineer. There's a letter in your file saying that he doesn't think it's an issue. It's already been winterized three times. We've met with the homeowners association on multiple occasions trying to figure out if there was a solution. Really the only other solution other than leaving it is to dig it up. There doesn't seem to be a good reason to do that because it's operating normally. So if we were doing a public roadway here, we might be having a very different discussion, but this is a private roadway, which will be always maintained by the homeowners association. So we've negotiated with the homeowners association, this escrow agreement, where my office as escrow agent will hold $20,000 in escrow for the next five years. Should there be a problem, we would take the money and repair the issue. After that time, they'll have plenty of money and their own operating expenses to deal with any issue with that small, limited area of coverage. I think that we've met with engineering a couple of times on this. There's really no fix other than what I had suggested. They really have no statement here other than wasn't built to design. They have no major objection to this set aside. I already had the homeowners association sign this so that you didn't have to take my word for it, not because I was being presumptuous that the board would accept it. So those are the three requests I have before the board is the two minor changes to the site plan and to allow for this escrow agreement due to the small decrease in coverage in that area on the basin.
All right. Why don't we go to the board? Why don't we take these one at a time?
I'm ready for this one.
Okay.
Which one do you want to start?
Let's start with the fence.
So my question there is, because I was not on the board when this went through, was what was the reason? I'm going to ask the board and Jeff if you recall why this fence was placed there on the property.
I'm going on a long time ago recollection. I think it was simply to demarcate between the two properties. I think the fence itself was not designed to properly provide screening.
No.
It's supposed to be a rail fence according.
Right. So it wasn't to provide screening. I think it was simply to demarcate the boundary.
Okay, that was what I inferred, but I wasn't sure. So my question now is, have we got anything in writing from the abutter?
No.
This really is an issue between the abutter and balsam.
No, because the abutter wasn't part of the hearing process. We didn't put it there because the abutter requested it. We had just shown it on the plan. And then when we actually completed the plan, it really isn't necessary out there. The house is actually set far away. There's pretty clear markation between the two properties. It's just not necessary.
Okay, so I'm fine with that. I just, that's.
John?
Yeah, my question was going to be about the abutter, but yeah.
Dylan?
Karen?
No additional questions?
All right. Number two, the garden bocce court. Bob?
So this one here, first off, I would have appreciated if it came on letterhead from the condo association as opposed to coming from Scott Clark with acknowledgement from the condo association.
Sure.
I would have felt a little more at ease with that. But my question really has to do, were these features marketed when these units were sold? Were these something that the development was marketing as, as a feature?
Oh, sure. They're shown on the plan. And Scott was going to actually put in the garden, but at that time, the homeowners association said they did not want it.
So I understand the homeowners association does, was there a vote taken? And my question really is, was it unanimous amongst all the homeowners? My concern here is, I don't want to step into this if there's even one homeowner at this point saying, well, I bought this because this was a feature of the development.
Well, the good news is it's prepared. So all the features are there that are necessary. If somebody wanted to go plant tomatoes there tomorrow, they could. It's just not, we didn't plant anything. The garden's not.
But the bocce court's not installed.
Bocce court's not installed and they did not want a bocce court. They didn't want the maintenance of it. They wanted none of it.
Okay. See, but see, I understand a majority don't want it, but I want to make, I would prefer to say it's unanimous that nobody wants it.
Well, however, the homeowners' rules and regulations, 75% of that association through the trustees can make all the rules and regulations themselves, so it doesn't theoretically have to be unanimous regardless of the fact. But you didn't have to take my word for it. That's why I had the trustees sign something themselves so that you didn't have to take my word for it.
Okay. That's just, that's just what I'm a little uneasy with at this point.
Right.
Again, if you're worried, if you're worried about either liability on the part of the town or courtesy to each and every future, you know, homeowner there, at the end of the day, as Attorney Robbins stated, essentially you have the property owner now requesting the change. Legally, they are the property owner.
And that gets to my other point about, I would have appreciated the letter coming from the prop, the property owner itself.
They probably don't have it, right? They probably don't have a letterhead. They're just a group and.
Well, it came from Scott with them acknowledging it. That's, that's where I would have been a little bit.
But you do have the agreement for the escrow where you have the trustee signing that makes also, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, okay.
I would take that over.
I'm fine with it.
That was all your question.
Dylan?
I'm good.
Darren?
No, I think, Melissa, didn't, this came up about a while back.
It did. It did come up a year or two ago. Didn't the residents say they didn't?
Your not, your memory is excellent. So Attorney Robbins, we, I don't remember how long ago it is.
Trees.
But we did inform you that they would be coming back before you at a later time for these two issues. And at that time, they were only trying to set up the security and stuff for like the as-built, the emergency access. And we said they would be coming back as a fall for this. So.
Right. But it wasn't an agenda item at that time, so we couldn't take it out.
Couldn't vote.
Okay.
It was when they were trimming some trees along the back, right at that 100-foot buffer.
Just to, for Bob, for clarification, it's been, and it, we've known about it for a while. So it's not like it's just been part of this most recent. They decided not to do the bocce court last week.
Yeah, no, I understand that. It's just, I just want to make sure that somebody didn't buy a unit being told, I'm going to get a bocce court, and now we stepped into this.
It was a pickleball court.
Exactly. People would be angry.
All right. So now, installation of the emergency access road. Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
No.
Outstanding landscaping, lawman seeded. We're good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
So the as-built plan's been submitted. I guess the last question is on the establishment of the escrow account.
This one here, the only question I have is just making sure we have everything entered into the record. You, you mentioned it was 250 square feet was the spec. What was the actual as-built? And whereabouts on the plan is that particular?
It's on the, there's an exhibit plan that's actually prepared by George, I'm going to butcher his last name, Democropolis. And he shows on there exactly where it is, but it's, it's a portion of three and then a very small portion of two that the coverage doesn't have the proper coverage.
Over the pipes.
Over the pipes. Yep, that's it. And like they, he thinks it has no bearing whatsoever on the actual construction or any, there's been no damage, no issues whatsoever. So that he, you actually have a written letter from him in your file saying that this is his suggestion.
Okay, so that is.
Based that on conversations with the manufacturer.
Yeah. You can see him on the sketch plan that's attached to the escrow agreement. It's the small checked box here at the very end. And then you can see on the portion of three, it's this triangular, triangular piece.
Okay. And then just the last question is, do we have anything in writing from engineering?
Well, if your business is letter, right, Paul won't, it'll pine on this. Is that what?
We do have an email chain that, we've gone back and forth with this for a long time. So Paul's basic position, from your engineer's perspective, he can't really take a position on this because it's not installed to the specs of the installer, because they suggest a certain amount of cover. We don't have a certain amount of cover on these pipes. Like I said at the beginning, if this were an, if I was going for road acceptance, we'd be having a very different discussion right now. But because this is a public road, that's why we, a private roadway, excuse me, that's why we're suggesting of doing the escrow just to make sure that the homeowners association, homeowners association, geez, has enough protection going forward.
Right. And the concern is that the road will buckle, not that the infiltration won't work.
Right.
The, no issue with stormwater, it's that the road will buckle, right?
Right. And then we'd have to correct.
Right. And, yeah.
Okay, I'm fine.
Dylan?
I'm fine.
Dylan?
I'm good.
Karen?
No, my only question is, so we're going to have this escrow for, for five years, which I think is great. Is there a final inspection before the escrow is released?
No, I, I will actually hold it. The town can be out of this completely. So this would be a private agreement between Scott and the homeowners association. Instead of the town asking, acting as the escrow agent, my office will act as the escrow agent. And at the end of five years, the funds would just go back to Scott. Yeah. Or Balsam Circle LLC, as the case may be.
So that's going to be directly with you and the homeowners association?
That's correct.
Right. Okay.
How do we want these? Separated or all as one mass?
Joe's agenda item.
Yeah. It would be good, I guess, to have the minor modifications as one and then the.
Sure.
Release of funds is a separate vote.
And then maybe the escrow is a separate?
I mean, do we even vote on that since it's private? I think we're just voting to release the funds and that agreements between Attorney Robbins, the homeowners association and the developer.
Mr. Chair, I think the only thing that Mr. Chair would need is the plans as modified. You approve the as-built.
As modified.
As modified by the things we've discussed this evening. Because once you've done this, the as-built plan will be complete and I can put it on record with the maintenance agreement. So if you make that vote, I think that would protect you.
Okay.
We want on the record, though, that part of the reason that we released the funds for the as-built is tied to the fact that escrow's being established and the town is not holding it.
Yeah, I guess you're right. No?
Which is similar to the language in the agenda.
Yeah.
Releasing subject to the establishment.
Let's take a crack at this. Okay, I will move that for PB 1924, we, 21 and 23 Carlisle Road, also known as Balsam Circle, we accept as minor modifications not installing a fence along the common lot line with 17 Carlisle Road and to not construct the proposed community garden or bocce court spaces at the request of the homeowners association.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. I will move for PB 1924 that we release the following funds: $20,000 for the installation of the emergency access road, $45,300 for the outstanding landscaping, and $125,000 security that will be returned to Westford Balsam Circle only after the as-built plan has been approved, which it has. So I'll, I'll move that we release all of those under the condition that there's an establishment of a third-party escrow of $20,000 that will not be held by the town of Westford for a period of five years for being available for road repairs if there is an issue with the retention basin.
Infiltration bed.
Infiltration bed, sorry.
I want to second, but just with a friendly modification.
Please.
When you, when you stated the escrow that, we just specified that it's an escrow account between the homeowners association.
And the developer.
And the developer, sure. Thank you.
All right. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Agenda item C, discussion related to public outreach strategy for the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District.
I didn't bring a number two pencil yet.
It's not a quiz.
Okay.
We just.
So if you may recall, during some of your discussions, and of course, we haven't started the public hearing process yet. That'll begin on January 22. I think multiple members of this board expressed that it would be great to develop either some explainers or answers to common questions that might arise so that we can better inform the voters earlier than normal in the process. Because this is a significant amendment proposal. And so we're just trying, we cobble together a couple of questions here. And there's a couple of different ways we could approach this. We could do a series of, you know, frequently asked questions with answers. We could do a series of explainers by topics. We could do both. Maybe one has more detail if people care about a particular topic. And we're just trying to, over the next two weeks, maybe start to put together some of these and maybe bring that to the board as part of the opening of the public hearing process so we can start to educate the public earlier than normal. So we have some questions here and we just want to see if any of these are sort of on the track that you were thinking about. Where are there gaping holes and where do you think people will have questions? And what do you think is the best way to organize this and/or present it? If it's simple FAQs, if it's like a sheet per topic? We're just looking for input from the board.
So this is good. The first one I note in here is just to help the audience, the voters understand the difference between what the mandate is and building of the units. The mandate is simply to have the zoning in place.
Yep.
It is, and you kind of hinted at it here, but it's totally separate from building units. If we get the zoning in place and no units are ever built, we will have complied with the mandate.
Yep. So potential versus actual and.
Yeah.
None of them have to be built.
Right. But the mandate i- isn't the construction, it's the zoning that. And if we don't pass the zoning at town meeting, we don't meet the mandate.
And just to be clear, we could pass it, well, actually, we have an October town meeting, but.
Let's not, let's not, let's not kick the bucket down the road.
To be transparent, but there's still a lot of follow-through. I would be a little worried. We have to get attorney general approval. After we have attorney general approval, we have to submit to executive office, housing livable communities, to see if it's then compliant. We've already submitted a preliminary, application for preliminary compliance. So one would think that if we don't make drastic changes, if we get a good now, you would think we would have a good then if it passes town meeting. But I take nothing for granted.
Right. And I think that they're probably changing by day.
No comment.
Yeah.
And I have to get the exact terms. You know, obviously, we no longer are subject to the comprehensive permit because we've hit our, well, our SHI of 10%.
I don't think it's that absolute, but we are definitely in a much better position.
We're in a better position. We, we aren't subject to some of the potential penalties we could have incurred, like other communities could still incur, by not meeting that 10%. And I'd like to get something in there about that. That even though we've hit that, that has nothing to do with this.
Okay. I like that separation of.
By penalties, do you mean?
Kind of have that under 16 of how it's different from a comprehensive.
We kind of have that, yeah.
Yeah.
But we can try to include something within that kind of topic.
I don't like Boston telling us what to do.
Joe, a tea party? Thinking out loud, these questions, they're good. They're a mix of educating people on the MBTA Communities Act in general. And then to some degree, there's ones that are specifically talking about what we've done in Westford to meet the mandate, right?
Yes.
Just thinking out loud, so maybe not a great idea, but would it make sense to almost separate it into two sections so that there's some general information just about the MBTA Communities Act in general, where people can get information about what we were required to do, and then a separate section of how is Westford responding to the mandate and what we've done? Just because in reading through this, they're all very good, but I'm like, if I hadn't sat through the meetings I've sat through, I might be like, wait a minute, I'm getting confused. Because at some points, I'm learning about the act in general and at some areas, I'm learning about what we're doing about it.
So that is one option we've thought about is having, you know, a general FAQ and then a series of, like, I guess, you know, topics, whether it's, you know, what have we done? What is an overlay district?
Yeah.
And where is it town and why were these areas picked?
Yep.
One could just be housing benefits. That way, if someone's only interested in where is this thing, they could get that as like a separate document versus having to read one long.
So I'm seeing in here that we have, our mandate is that we must create the potential for 924 units. There's an obvious, how many units could we theoretically fit in what's being proposed in the bylaw? That I don't see in here as a question, but it would be a question that would probably come up at town meeting. So.
Oh, yes.
In the Westford section, you could have, what is the zoning bylaw amendment we're proposing? What does it provide for? And then we could actually answer questions as far as why are we going beyond what would be the minimum requirement mandate? And we could add some reasons that we're considering that.
Yep.
Those are all excellent.
And I did reach out to, I think it was right after our last meeting, there was a story on one of the Boston news channels regarding Milton. This has come up in a very negative manner with Milton right now because of what I would perceive as a lack of understanding about MBTA community. And there was a lack of understanding about what we, I just questioned earlier about the capacity in terms of the number of potential dwelling units versus the mandate, which is to simply have the zoning in place. And the residents seem to have interpreted as we are absolutely going to get this number of units and therefore we're going to have this impact on our schools, emergency services, et cetera.
Yep.
So I think there's lessons to be learned there in terms of how to educate. And this goes a long ways.
Yep.
To doing that.
You have something? Come up to the mic.
Diane Ward, 122 Depot, just was, was this intended? Are there, are there plans to do many videos at all?
That has absolutely been discussed, but we know, we think a mixture of approaches, some in written, some in maybe bite-sized segments, some for those that want to read all the FAQs. It has been discussed with town manager about some short informational videos.
Mm-hmm.
Some people prefer that versus reading.
Right.
And then we also intend to reach out to various boards and committees and have some extended office hours for those that want to. So we're going to try to do sort of a prolonged approach and variety, variety.
Okay. Knowing that town meeting is coming up in March and we've got budget challenges, strongly urge everybody to get the communication out as soon as possible and start that process because you're up against challenges here. And people are going to ask a lot of questions about what the impact is to the community financially, to the schools, to the services we provide. So the sooner this, something like this can, can get out to the world, the better for everybody. So.
Anybody have any other thoughts?
Gaping holes and questions. Do you want to see FAQs and sort of explainers broken up? General by topic, Westford specific?
Yeah, I think like Dylan's suggestion, I think is great.
Okay, yeah. We can do that?
Discuss the, what it is and then how is it going to impact us or thoughts of what would it?
Yeah, the, the why we're proposing what we're proposing versus the minimum is one that if we don't put it on paper, it's going to come up in, in the discussion. So I feel like we may as well address it head-on, what the strategy is for why we're proposing what we're proposing.
Underutilized properties that could be much better used.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I just, to reiterate your guys' comments, I think a bunch of people have come up to me over the last month or so to say, you know, what's going on with this multi-family thing? What is it? So it's, but once I explain, this is a mandate that came down from the state. You know, we have to do this. This is what we're required to do. People are like, oh, okay. So now they understand, you know, we're not just trying to put something together here to put a bunch of houses in. We're, the state's mandating this and if we don't do it, we're going to potentially lose money on grants and things like that. So I think that has to be laid out in the first sentence or two.
Yep.
So they keep reading.
Or when we explain it at town meeting, it has to be, listen, we're here for, this is why we're here.
Right.
You know, we're mandated to be here and this is what we've done, taking steps to put a process in place.
Control as much as we can possibly control.
I think that's, but, you know, people are like, what's going on with this? It's a. We're being ordered to do this. One minor point, too, is when you explain what is a zoning overlay district, obviously, you can also give examples of other zoning overlay districts that we already have in the bylaws.
Yeah. So the other thing is maybe too deep a dive for here now, but the state did provide sample zoning, but they're painting with a broad brush to affect 177 communities. So their goal through this mandate is just more housing units, period. They're not, I'm not judging them. They don't care what kind. They just want more housing units, right? That's the goal of this mandate.
Potential for more housing.
Potential for more, well, they want more housing. So, but we, if we just simply took that sample zoning, we don't think we're doing a service to our community. So.
That's a really good point about putting the Westford flavor on this. And that comes back to some of the questions in here about what public outreach has already occurred. And it got to that with that conference that took place back in the fall.
Yeah. Because if we take the sample zoning, you're probably going to get a lot of the same kinds of additional housing and you're not going to be doing much to diversify our housing stock. So, and you're probably not going to be doing a great service to our aging population who may want to downsize or give more options for others. So we just think we can do better than the sample zoning, so.
But I think it's important that that's really well communicated. As Bob said, that we want to make sure everybody realizes that we're not using this, the sample because we do want the Westford touch on it and we don't want the ugly apartment buildings, basically.
Your words, not mine?
Yes, basics.
They still serve a purpose. They still provide housing, but I don't think it's reaching as much of our population as we'd like.
It's not what Westford's about.
And I think back to roughly the time I came back on this board again a couple years, several years ago, and not without calling out a specific development, but there was a development marketed for downsizing to the aging population of Westford. And it did downsize, but unfortunately, it upvalued significantly. And so I think we really have to have both goals of downsizing and, and. And so, I think we really have to have both goals of downsizing and, and downvaluing that housing for those individuals, so that it is more affordable, not just downsized.
Yep. And one of the ways to do that, though, is also smaller square footage.
Well, the example I'm thinking of did that, but unfortunately, market rates drove it the other way. And it was extremely popular, and the values are probably fifty percent or more higher than were expected, I think, when the thing, when the development was planned.
We do have in the draft language either requirements or incentives for not just the affordable, which could be required, but also the community and workforce housing, which would probably fit more of the range that you're talking about.
Yeah, and I know, like, what, twenty-four, twenty-five years ago, when we were doing flexible development and some of the other affordable housing, we had a concept back then called Westfitable.
Yeah.
And it's the community housing. So...
We appreciate your input.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, can I just add one more thing, too? I think it'd also be important to tie this into the Housing Production Plan because a lot of what we're looking at here, you know, meets, satisfies a lot of those goals that we have listed in the Housing Production Plan, which is about all of Westford housing, not just affordable or not just workforce, but all housing.
Relate it to the housing.
Yeah, bringing it all together kind of makes everybody realize it's really thought out.
Thank you.
Okay, next, review of draft minutes from November twentieth and December fourth. Are there a motion for that?
Move that we approve the meeting minutes of November twentieth.
Discussion? Anything, Bob?
Nope.
Gentlemen?
I don't even know how this possibly would have happened, but on line eighty, my name is misspelled.
Are you sure there's checking to see if people will do the draft minutes?
Who was the second on that?
There wasn't, yep.
Okay.
I'll second.
Egrudgingly.
Yeah.
Subject to.
Subject to correction.
All right, besides, uh, any change?
Yeah, just, I just happened to catch this when I was going through here. It got greatly abbreviated in the minutes of November twentieth, line ninety-eight. I think when we say Neshoba, we need to be very clear, it's Neshoba Ski Hill, as opposed to Neshoba High School.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right, we're all good?
Yep.
We've got a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move that we approve the planning board meeting minutes of December fourth.
Second.
Discussion?
No. I'm good.
Bob?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondents, I saw a nice picture in there. I don't know what the...
That's to get you thinking for when the public hearing starts. So, the folks over at Tech Park East, they're happy that these two parcels right above have been kept in the mix thus far. Just as they start to think about any kind of concept plans that involve their property, they're looking to request that the board consider adding this one parcel back in, so that way, it's these three parcels over here. Whereas they start to think about any kind of concepts they're starting to lay out for future development. So, something to get you thinking for the start of the public hearing.
You'll put that in the board's packet for the twenty-second?
Correct.
Okay.
What are they, straight lines? Is that the power lines?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe that would be more affordable.
This is not allowed.
Let's see why this was added. Remember, Israel was here, and he talked about, he used the example of one-twenty-eight, the steakhouse is sort of...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the restaurant out front, maybe.
Restaurant facing the road, and then apartments behind. That's where, that's, that's I'm sure why they added this here, so that from one-ten, it would look like you can chill in.
Yeah.
That restaurant he quoted, that was no longer, since it's now been replaced by something else.
Yeah, the Strigga, yeah, it was someplace else.
The Strigga's gone, it's sort of something else. I was driving past it.
Something else, and then something else.
Oh, was it? Really?
Yeah.
It's the third edition. Clearly, those are wildly successful.
All right, anybody got anything else? Move a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.